I would just do it that way.
Can you guys see okay?
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Okay.
And if we need to-
You can move it, I won't be here, so you can move it closer.
Yeah, you can move it closer and then you went to all the trouble to put it together.
Yeah.
It's probably better this way, and if you can submit it, like email it to Sue Jordan, then it'll be, we'll make it part of the record, put it on the record that it's part of the record in the application.
Okay.
That's good.
Great. Okay, if I walk around, I wasn't planning on going around this close to you, but I'm gonna need to, I'm gonna need to just be able to kinda see-
It's just a question of the, ma- making sure there's a microphone that can pick you up so the people at home can hear you.
They can bring the microphone over.
You can bring the mic with you, you can go, you know. With a microphone up here.
Three.
Three what?
One, two, three.
Yeah, Bob's not coming, I don't know where Steve is, I don't know where James is.
Steve, I spoke with him earlier today and he is coming, so maybe we'll wait a few minutes.
We still have a few minutes.
You might, maybe Wayne, if you move over one, then they'll be more concentrated for people looking at the screen.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I can be, uh, Bob Daigle.
Yeah.
You'll make a good Bob Daigle.
Those are awfully big shoes to fill, I'm sure we-
Those are significant shoes to fill.
We'll do a great job. There he is.
Speak of the devil.
My ears were ringing. I wasn't sure what-
We just need James.
I want to sit over here, we, we're having some technical problems with, uh-
And there he is.
No, I like to make that.
Powerpoint, so you, instead of sitting where you normally sit, you might wanna sit over this way, so you can see-
You can sit at Wayne's seat.
You can sit at Wayne's seat.
Yeah, 'cause I'm not gonna be, I'm not gonna be here.
Bob's not coming.
Yeah, man, how it's going?
You can sit and pretend you're Bob.
Will he be Bob?
Yes.
Who are you?
Yeah.
It's a nightmare most days.
I will do my best.
Here you go.
Oh, look at you, Mr. Goode.
All right?
Good.
Yeah, huh?
This is the new look.
This is, it's the new me.
Okay.
I'm going with Steve.
So we all set, now you can all see, I can see fine.
This is what we're looking at, yeah?
Can we get on, are we ready to get on the air?
Yes.
I'll call down and tell them we're ready, if you're ready, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, here. Let's do it. Let's light this candle.
Okay, there we go, we're all set, there you are, thank you. Bye-bye.
I'm watching the monitor.
We should the folder if you'd like to.
Okay, welcome to the Newmark as zoning board of adjustment meeting from Monday, June 3rd, 2019, and our first order of business as always is to pledge allegiance.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, our next, is this yours or mine? Yours? No, thank you. Uh, the next item of business is the review and approval of minutes from April 1st, 2019, and April 15th, 2019. Let's take up the April 1st minutes first. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes, and then if there are changes, we can take them up at that time. Do we have copies of the minutes from the April 1st meeting?
I don't think I reviewed those, but, uh-
I don't remember having gotten them. Did we hit, do we, do, do you remember receiving them?
No.
The only minutes I got were from the Conservation Commission.
Okay, so let's defer Agenda Item Number Two till the next meeting, I just don't remember reading those meeting minutes. So move on to our regular business item, and I understand, Jonathan, you're gonna step down at this point, thank you. And because Mr. Daigle is not here, and Mr. Sac is accusing himself, Connor Crowley will be sitting on this application. The application is of the Moody Point Community Association, public hearing for an application for a variance from Section 32-155(c)(3) of the Newmark as zoning ordinance requested by the Moody Point Community Association to permit construction of a riprap barrier in the wetlands area. That's a hydroic aid, polydrain soils, and a 50-foot buffer to prevent erosion and degradation of the property in Great Bay, where severe erosion has caused shoreline soils to be completely undermined. Without this stabilization, the slope will continue to erode, causing existing trees and vegetation to collapse, die, and in turn expose the embankment to further rapid erosion, resulting in sedimentation of the surrounding tidal estuary and river mouth. The lot is located at Cushing Road, tax map R2, Lot 36-4, in the R1 zone. And, uh, riprap, for those who don't know, is basically large stones. So, uh, the way we typically work these things is the applicant's representative will come forward, make a presentation, um, will then open the floor for public comment, uh, give the applicant an opportunity to respond to anything that may come up in public comment, then close the public comment portion, deliberate, and proceed to a decision. So with that all being said, Mr. Lanzetta? Good evening, uh, please don't read the application to us, but this is your chance to hit the highlights, things that you think are important for us to know. We have read everything.
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, my name is Josh Lanzetta, I'm a volunteer at the town of Newmarket, Georgia. We represent the Moody Point Community Association in conjunction with the variance application to the board this evening. First, I'd like to thank you for being here, I understand it's a volunteer board, 7:00 on a Monday night. I will try to be as brief as I can while hitting all the high points, with the understanding that you've seen our application and our DES approval and permit. I'd also like to thank specifically Diane Hardy and Susan Jordan on the record for their continued help and support with our application. I did prepare, for the first time ever in a decade of doing land use, a PowerPoint that was prepared by the folks at Moody Point on the Environmental Committee. We are having a problem with the feed to the TV, so I apologize for the small screen, and I'll try not to use it that much, I just wanted to show you some pictures of the erosion that we're dealing with. We are here requesting variance from Article 5, Section 32-155(c)(3) of the Town of Newmark in New Hampshire's zoning ordinance. I will very briefly address the zoning ordinance and the variance criteria in a minute, but first I'd like to orient you to the project, the problem, and our proposed solution. So first, if you don't, if you're not familiar with Moody Point, I wasn't, I've been a New Hampshire resident for 40 years, and fortunately didn't know about it until we were contacted to undertake representation here. And I did, I got a brand-new laser pointer for the attorneys in the room, and I, I don't know if it's gonna be as fun as it would've been if it was up there, so it, it moves the thing around, and it does all sorts of stuff, but, um, I just wanna orient you to the actual property and what we're dealing with. So, this is Moody Point, you can see, um, the community and the homes associated, it's about, you know, approximately 100 residences, and the area that we're dealing with is kinda this acute spot right here where it says pier. There is a pier that juts into Great Bay, right there, and there's also what we're calling the Screen House, which is approximately 800 square feet or so, and has 1,500 square feet of wraparound deck, that's almost right at the high watermark, so it's really right on the shore. It's a very unique piece of property, it's at the very, um, western side of the estuary, and here's a, we're zoomed out a little bit here, um, it's unique because it has a lot of different hydraulic effects, meaning, uh, very specifically, there are four water bodies that affect this point, and that cause really severe erosion because there are multiple tidal and current issues kind of swirling around this point. You can see where the arrow is here, um, that's the point, that's pointing kind of directly at where the Screen House is. Just to the west, right here, is the Lamprey River and the river mouth, okay? And that's a pretty big, uh, water body. To the south, right here, is the Squambskut River mouth. And then, what you can't see from the air unless you zoom in really closely, is what's called Lubberlin Creek, and that, if you look in this kinda like light green area, and this is, um, a conservation area, um, the Moody Point, um, conservation area, Lubberlin Creek kinda comes down through this light green and empties in to the bay right here, so, and then we have Great Bay itself, which is an enormous water body. So, we kind of have the confluence of four water bodies and the different tides and currents affecting this point of land that really is jutting out into the water. The other, um, unique factor about Moody Point is that, and you'll see this in the application, and I'll probably butcher this explanation, but it's subject to a high amount of wind fetch, and to try to break this down really simply, um, we're talking about wind velocities that are crossing an unobstructed bay, right, and buffeting the shore with resulting storm surge, so we have wind energy that's creating wave energy, and that creates storm surge. This is unique because what's categorized in our slope stabilization, uh, application as a broad range of fetch and the resulting storm surge is coming, it's multidirectional, so because this is a point of land sitting on the western edge of the bay, it's getting wind fetch from approximately 2.7 miles, kind of, the wind is ripping down from up here, but this is, you know, the northern part of the bay goes up into the Piscataqua over here, so you have like 2.7 miles of unobstructed, uh, wind here. You have about 1.1 mile unobstructed wind coming up the Squambskut, and then the really severe one is the direct easterly that's coming from the trade port all the way across about three and a half miles of bay, and then just slamming into the point. So, what we have is this intense erosion, and then all of the resulting sedimentation from that erosion, it's causing property damage, and it's starting to get more rapid and exponential because as we lose topsoil, and as we lose root structure, which is what keeps the topsoil together, all of the flora is starting to lean and pull out, so I'm gonna show you some pictures just to orient you, um, to see it, and honestly, the pictures don't do it justice, if you go out to the property, the embankment really is a C shape, and you could tuck yourself up into the erosion basically, if you were standing at the waterline, in and around the dock. And there are three sites we're gonna talk about, but in all, we're dealing with about 180 feet of stabilization right on that point on both sides of where the dock and the Screen House are. So, I'll quickly flip you through some of the pictures, and unfortunately, they're not really interesting, I'm showing you dirt and roots. That's what it is, right? But that's what erosion is. So, um, you can see the note, this is looking to the left of the pier, so we're standing on the pier, looking left, the entire embankment is gone, and you can see all the resulting root structures here. This is looking left, but, um, east of the pier, and you can kinda see the pier, it's tucked in right back here, that's the dock, and that's just on concrete pilings, um, but this entire embankment is gone, right here, and it continues, if you were standing here looking at it, it would be to the east, which would be my right. Onshore looking left, west towards the pier, the pier is a lot clearer in this picture, as are the root structures. Um, here, you get a small view of the Screen House looking uphill up the embankment, and again, this really doesn't do it justice, but you can see that these trees are leaning at like 30 to 40 degrees. It's just, it's, not only is this a horrible environmental condition, it's a public safety hazard, I, I wouldn't wanna be standing under any of these trees during a huge windstorm or an ice storm, and I certainly, when I was out there on the sidewalk on Friday with these guys, didn't walk along the edge of it anywhere because it's degrading, you can't walk there, you can't walk on the shore, you can't walk on top, it's completely fallen apart. It really does need to be shored up, or else all these trees are gonna get lost, and this is all habitat that's very, very important to the estuary and the surrounding land, this is essentially conservation land. Again, roots and dirt and trees that are leaning near the Screen House, this is a little bit backed out, and this whole area is just completely decimated from the erosion. So, what's the solution? Chairman Hawkins already, um, alluded to it, we're suggesting a riprap barrier, and this is only in here to illustrate what riprap can look like, these are shutterstock photos, this is not what it's gonna look like when it's done. We're proposing, um, shoring up three different zones on the property with riprap, and then, um, jute mats, which are made out of coconut fiber, they're very interesting, you've probably heard of them in other, um, applications that you've seen, they're biodegradable, and, um, any sort of flora can grow, so they take seeds, and over time, and as kind of outlined in the DES report, the idea is to create this living barrier, and that's kind of a concept that's been around for a long time, but with the Shoreland Protection Act, it probably in the last 10 years, it's more in vogue. And that's a really important point, here's just an example of what jute mats can look like, they can be in rolls, they can be logs, they can be rolled out, any number of ways, but it's basically to create, um, natural topsoil on top of a barrier that's actually, you know, obviously stronger than just, you know, natural, you know, materials and soil. So, we have three sites where we're proposing to do the stabilization, it's a total of about 180 linear feet, um, very creatively, we've named them Site 1, 2, and 3. And the first site is on the, uh, on the far west, the second site is east around the point on the other side of the pier, and then the third site is yet again around where the Screen House is. You can't see it very well in this picture, but again, this red area is dealing where the point is, my hope is that this was blown up large so you could see it, but it is in your plans, it's the index page of the plan set we submitted. The better illustration is that second plan set page that you might have, where you can see the areas of permanent impact in red. So, respectively, Site 1, Site 2, Site 3. Now, the total square footage of permanent impact is approximately 2,400 square feet of permanent impact. This area of blue is a temporary impact area, and that's just under 5,000 square feet, that's the staging area for the construction that's required to get these in place, um, still in the buffer, so we point that out, and in the DES approval, um, the permit contemplates an impact of about 7,400 square feet, which is both permanent and temporary impacts. I think it's worth noting, and I, I understand you read the materials, that this has been, to, to get to this plan, we believe this is the least impacting alternative that there is, and it was a two-year collaborative effort on the part of, uh, the association members and a number of state and federal agencies, and I think that's really important to note, and if you read the DES letter prefacing the permit that we received, um, I believe that you can see that they went through a number of different designs, they made a number of different changes, and that each respective agency, um, basically approved our application. We worked with the Natural Heritage Bureau, um, they found no major concerns with our sec-, the second and final version of our application, uh, New Hampshire Fishing Game found sufficient measures to, for the replantings of trees for bald eagle habitat, which was a major concern at this property. As an aside, we also, um, have accounted for and changed the design and the location of the barriers to account for, um, the swamp elders that are present and threatened in the area, so we're not actually gonna affect any of the, um, flora that's presently threatened on the embankment. The P's Development Authority, um, found no negative impacts, that's the Division of Ports and Harbors, I think we have two in the state of New Hampshire, so not a huge agency, but, and then the DES and the Army Corps of Engineers also gave us a permit finding minimal impact to waters of the US, which we know just basically references Great Bay because it's navigable. The DES application, in that process, DES found that what we're proposing and the impact contemplated did not rise to the level of requiring a hearing. And not only did it not rise to the level of requiring a hearing because they found it to be minimal, a minimal impact, um, it also, the application went through with no appeal, so 30-day appeal period, told no appeal. And then we also, uh, worked with the Newmark Conservation Commission, which unanimously recommended, uh, and wrote a letter to DES to approve our application. So, I'm focusing on that to point out that we believe we tabled a very, uh, good proposal of how to deal with erosion, how to stop sedimentation, stop property damage on a very uniquely situated property, um, that has essentially innate hardship in that the shape of the property and the natural factors that affect the property, um, are completely out of our control. That brings me to the variance criteria. We are in second 32-155, Article 5 gives us a wetlands overlay district, and in Section 32-155(c)(3), we're not able to alter any part of the property that's in that wetlands buffer, there's no way that we can comply with that, um, and especially no way that we could deal with this property and trying to work essentially on the water's edge to stop the erosion, which is why we're seeking a variance tonight. I think that's about as abridged as I can make my presentation. I, uh, would love to field questions, um, or answer any concerns that you might have, and then request respectfully that you grant our applications.
First thing I'm gonna suggest is that you, and we alluded to this before we came on the record, that you forward a copy of the PowerPoint to Sue Jordan at the Planning and Zoning Office so that we make sure that it's part of the record, uh, and that's very helpful. What I'd like to do before we get to questions is take any public comment that there might be, so we'll open the floor for public comment, and then, uh, Mr. Lanzetta, we'll give you a chance to respond, depending on what comes up, it's, it's your option.
Public comment, so the floor is now open for public comment if anyone cares to do so.
Seeing no one coming forward? Is, anything you'd like to add, Mr. Lanzetta?
Uh, no, there's only, thank you.
Okay, so we're gonna close the public comment portion of the hearing and proceed to deliberation on the part of the board. Any questions? Any comments, any observations anybody would like to make at this time? What, what I'm gonna propose then is that we, um, adopt the very thorough application and materials submitted as the board's finding, as findings as to each of the five criteria, and on that basis, I'll entertain a motion to approve the application as submitted. Does anyone care to make that motion?
All right. Uh, I'll make a motion to approve the application as submitted.
And to adopt the application materials as the board's findings as to each criteria?
Motion.
Thank you. Thank you.
James?
Any further discussion?
If all is in favor, please signify by staying aye.
Aye.
Follows the post.
The ayes have it. Thank you very much for the very thorough presentation. Makes it very easy for us, but don't forget that PowerPoint, I think it's important that it go into the record. So, thank you very much. You're free to stay.
Thank you.
Thanks, good luck. Good project? Good project, important project? Got an extra color copy. That's an extra, that's mine. It's in there.
Yeah, I, I did it.
That's the color version.
It obviously really caused problems.
Josh knows exactly what to do when you've won, which is pack up and leave as quickly as possible.
Get out of town.
Something changes nearby.
Don't let the door hit.
When you've won, get out as quickly as possible.
That's the first day of law in Moscow, right?
Have a good night. Okay, so, new or old business that's become before the board? Jonathan and I were at the Planning and Zoning Conference on Saturday. Well, it would've been better if you had been there, but-
They missed, they missed you.
It was good, I thought it was interesting.
For, for a newbie, it was great, I mean, the, the slides that I emailed, uh, which was a great idea to distribute this stuff, and, and, uh, that was a, a really good session just onto the basics, you know, how do you, uh, conduct yourself as a member of a zoning board, and it was, uh, really good, and, and met some nice people, and-
Yeah.
Very dedicated group of people, which was very refreshing.
There had well over 100 people there, I would say, planning board members, zoning board members, um, there's a couple of things I think we're gonna need to look at, 'cause there's some legislative changes, I don't know if you, if you're in the, did you go to the legislative update, or the, the, the legal update section?
The, the, yes, yes, it was, uh-
Yeah. So, one of the things we need to look at is changing our rules of procedure to reflect our method of voting, whether we do item by item or vote on all five criteria as a whole, should be reflected in our rules of procedure, I'm not sure it is now. So we need to just say that, that's a legislative change that's coming in.
Wait, so they're saying that we have to do item by item, or are we-
No, we're saying whichever one you do should be written into your rules of procedure.
Oh, I see.
And you should be consistent, we have always voted on them as a whole.
I think that's the best way.
Yeah.
Yeah, 'cause you can have some anomalies where you have three people, you know, voting in favor of one criteria, and a different set of three people voting in favor of different, the second criteria and that kind of thing, and you end up passing, although if you voted on it as a whole, the thing might fail. But we've always done it as a whole, because we frankly don't have the kinda complex applications some people see. You know, you go to Manchester, their, their ZBA meetings, they'll have 30 or 40 items on the agenda, and they'll be there for three hours, but they go through them like this. We don't, we do five or six times a year, and it's pretty, um, it seems to work well for us. And if somebody wants to submit written requests for rulings and findings, we can consider them and take them up at that time, but that hard, that never happens in my experience. I was really surprised, there was discussion there about whether it was appropriate to have what Richie used to do, had the pre-written motion, come in with a motion pre-written, and whether that is prejudging the application, which never occurred to me, and I never felt myself constrained to agree.
Wouldn't that just be, he was an individual doing that, he wasn't representing the whole board, he was, so what?
That's kinda the way I look at it, but-
There have been times he's changed, you know, based on presentation or comments or anything like that, I'm pretty sure there's times that somebody might come in with a pre, pre-written, uh, motion, and then we, uh, edited it or modified it, you know-
Yeah.
Batten it out, so I don't, for us, I don't think it would be a big thing to keep that, especially, you know, making sure wording is appropriate and all that.
Well, I think we all come in here with a, a little bit of, after reading everything, we all come in with a little bit of, uh, I hate to say the word, prejudged, but-
You're kinda predisposed.
Yeah, predisposed, okay.
Yeah.
So, the only difference was he was putting it on paper, but I don't, I never felt that he was representing me when he put it on paper.
It's almost like a crib sheet in many ways, you think through the language before-
Yeah.
And, and, uh, so you don't have to do it on the fly.
Right, doing it on the fly is what gets you into trouble maybe, there was a couple of other minor things that I can't remember now, but just minor procedural tweaks, because there's changes in the law coming down, I can't, there was one in particular-
Constitution of land use boards, you can't have more than two of the same planning boards.
Yeah, that's not that big a deal for us. You can't be on the planning board in the ZBA.
I don't know why you'd want to.
I don't know, yeah, I don't know why you'd want to either.
ZBA and towns council?
That's right.
No?
I don't know, I don't think, there was one or two other things that I forget.
Something about equitable waivers, that you can pass one, I just mean four criteria, not all the criteria?
Yeah, I mean, there's some-
That was a nuance I was-
The town of Hanover by itself generates so much business, 'cause of Dartmouth. So anyway, so read, read through the materials, uh, definitely read through the, it's worthwhile to read through the materials, they were, they were really well done, I thought, and,
And a lot of it goes up on the OSI site, so it's a really good reference. The, the handbooks are there, and, and they're gonna be posting all the handouts from the conference, so you can check them out there as well.
The, the vast bulk of the law, the variance law and all this equitable waiver law and everything else comes from, it either comes from somewhere around Lake Winnipisaki or comes from Hanover. They're like single-handedly-
They're pushing the envelope, so.
Yeah. God bless them, so read, read through the materials, and, uh, we'll take a look at whether we need, take a look at our rules of procedure.
Yeah, I'll, I'll draft something for the next meeting if you'd like to, and we can have office of rules of procedure set up in the dance.
Bring in, right, circulate the rules of procedure, and, um, we'll try to define more, more specifically exactly what we need to look at in that respect. So it's good to-
Are you finding that there was a lot of either one way or another, and there was, you know, um, a discussion as to which one should or shouldn't be, and for example, the, you know, voting on each item versus the whole application, or do you come with pre, predetermined, or a pre, uh, pre-written, uh, motion?
Pros and cons?
Just pros and cons.
Was there a whole lot of, oh, you should or shouldn't do it kind of thing?
No.
No, okay, all right.
The, uh, I think that the threshold was whatever you do, be consistent.
Okay, sure.
And follow your own rules. You should have rules, you're required to have rules of procedure and follow them.
Something about a sixty day notice or something, I read.
Yes, that's the other thing is...
You can't change it within sixty days?
No, it, but there's a different thing.
You can't change what?
Under current law, you're supposed to have your hearing within thirty days after the variance is submitted. They're changing it to forty-five days.
Oh, okay.
That's one of the changes they're making. I, I think we should s- still try to do thirty, just as a best practice.
Works for us.
It works for us. Yeah, I mean, obviously, there's...
At least a month.
Usually good about getting back to Sue and scheduling it properly, so I don't think it's been a problem.
Just to do our best, because people, you know, there's a construction cycle. These folks, maybe they have a construction project underway, they got a contractor lined up.
Yeah.
I think it's proper to act as rapidly as possible. You know how it is.
Why would it be forty-five? Because that's more for the big cities, to give them more time.
Or the small towns.
To get their board together together.
They don't have dedicated administrators, maybe? So, is this electman or whoever is doing it?
It wouldn't be because the cities have a backlog, no, no.
The cities, they meet, they meet like twice, twice a month, you know, they, they meet frequently.
But I think thirty is good.
I think thirties are good.
Works for us.
It works for us. I didn't see anything where, oh gee, we're doing this and we really shouldn't do it.
I mean, I didn't have enough of a background of how we did it to understand the changes completely, but, uh...
We've had, I've been here seven years. We've been, it seems like forever.
Been it been longer?
Almost ten.
For you?
No.
Not for me?
Nine.
In the Z B A?
Yes.
For me?
Yeah, you were a month or two after me.
No, I wasn't until two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve. Because I was... I was in the U K until October two thousand ten.
I don't care.
Wow, anyway. In that time, we've had five or six appeals to the court.
Yeah, we have a good racket.
And we've prevailed in every single one of them, but we were never appealed on a procedural basis. Always because we made a stupid decision, never because the process we used was improper.
Stupid decision.
Well, that was the argument anyway. We prevailed in every single one of them and never got appealed for not giving somebody an opportunity to be heard or doing something like that.
Yeah, they did spend a fair amount of time talking about the importance of recording the minutes properly and the advantages of having, um, recording equipment and, uh, and all of that, so... Uh, the other, one, one other thing that was sort of an anomaly to me was, uh, they were talking about cell tower, uh, applications and the fact that the feds, um, have jurisdiction over an aspect of, uh, uh, cell tower applications, so...
Our cell tower is on the water tank, right?
Or on town home properties.
Or on town home property, yeah. So, it's not really an issue. Hasn't been an issue for, we haven't had big, large-scale litigation over that stuff?
And they do allow, they said that because of the federal guidelines, you can add antennas and dishes to a single tower without the normal restrictions.
The significance of that is five G is coming in. Five G relies on a lot of small transmitters that are mounted on poles.
Yeah.
So, that may be an issue that we're going to see down the line, but then, that's all federal jurisdiction. They're going to...
Five G is some scary stuff.
Because...
A whole lot, a whole next level of radiation and...
Well, that, that's why the, uh, uh, was it Howay, the Chinese company that, uh, is getting a lot of the contracts in Europe. And people are very nervous about the fact that they're going to be capturing all that data. It's going to be passing over their five G...
Yeah, it's a fair use to...
The other thing that the legislature has pending, and it's pending the budget process, is they're going to put in another sort of appellate body, like the Board of Tax and Land Appeals, specifically to hear land use appeals. So, there's going to be a land use appeal board of some kind. You can either go to Superior Court, or you can go to this board.
Some state board?
Yeah, it'll be just, it'll be set up just like the B T L A, except for land use appeals, to try to expedite the process. The Superior Court generally acts pretty quickly. They act within ninety days on these things usually, once it's submitted. But this is something I think to appease developers, try to make it quicker and cheaper. We'll see. The, the legislature has to fund it, and that's always an iffy proposition. It's going to cost four hundred thousand dollars to fund it.
They won't do it.
So, they won't do it, but that's another thing that's out there. Anyway, it's in the materials that I circulated around. I think it's well worth just to find, just to figure out what's going on out there. There's a few other minor things, but...
I got a small question.
Yeah.
So, what do we do with, um, older books of, um, regulation?
Chuck them or give them away?
Okay.
I'm sure you got a lot of people who are clambering to...
Uh, I mean, I got a line. I got a line of people.
To buy those things. They're like a hun, they're like a hundred and fifty bucks to buy that book.
You don't want to get rid of them unless, yeah.
I've wondered if maybe some school, planning school or law school might want you?
Out of date.
You know, that's the problem. You don't want to teach bad information.
So, chuck it or recycle it?
And we have a set here in the office, if anyone needs to go back and look at, what was the R S A in effect at the time of such and so?
So, the materials are well worth looking at, and, um, next time any of these things comes around, we should go, I think it's, I think it's fun to go as a group. You're the only person that knew that.
We, we like to entertain at the Screen House that they were talking about, so it would have been a great opportunity for a field trip.
Yeah. So, there it is. Okay, any other new or old business that have come before the board at this time? See none, entertain a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All who are in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All who oppose? The ayes have it. Thank you very much.